Good evening and welcome. Thanks for joining us today. I'm Kevin Corbett. I'm the CEO of the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority. So, welcome. We certainly are looking forward to having a robust conversation with you about something we find exciting that we're doing at the Healthcare Authority. You know, if you've been to the Healthcare Authority and been in our boardroom, you see two plaques or two indications of our, both our vision, our mission. You know, our vision, quite frankly, is for all Oklahomans to be healthy and have access to quality healthcare services regardless of their ability to pay. And that is an aspirational goal and we certainly hang to it. At the same time, you know, our role is really to help optimize the facilitation of access to healthcare. But really, it's about trying to change dynamics with regards to health outcomes and we're, and we're committed to that. But the reality is, and I know most of you know this, is that we still face significant challenges in Oklahoma with regards to improving health outcomes, whether it be obesity, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, substance abuse and addiction, mental health disorders, the list is pretty long. But we're not discouraged. We're certainly on a path to try to change that. And we feel like the, the one way we can do that is really look at the way we deliver healthcare from a Medicaid perspective. So, one of the things we're going to talk about today that you've heard probably a lot about is the transformation that we have underway to change the delivery system to something that we're now coining to be Sooner Select. We're very excited about the opportunity to really change from a fee-for-service business to really having a commitment by all stakeholders to improving health outcomes and, and building a system that encourages that, incentivizes that and rewards that. So, we want to talk about today what that transformation process looks like. There's a lot to it. A lot is underway. We just released an RFP for dental portion of our Sooner Select. And Trailer Raines, who's here tonight, is our state Medicaid director, is going to walk you through what this really means from a medical standpoint. But we certainly open to all questions. We want to make sure that you have the opportunity to get the information you need. This is going to be a, going to be a committed journey for all of us. And we think, quite frankly, once we have this underway, that we'll start to see the changes that we, I think we all are really expecting and really desire. So, with that, let me turn it over to Trailer Raines and we'll get on with the details of what this transformation looks like. Trailer.
Hi, good evening, everyone in the room. Thanks for joining us. It's a great turnout. Looks like I just saw we have over 147 folks joining us online. Also exciting. So, yeah, thanks for coming. So, I wanted to start off with, if you are an online or a virtual attendee, please, if you have questions at any point during the session, put those in the Q and A box. That'll help us manage those. We have folks online ready to answer those questions and we can answer them live here in the room as well. So, really, the point of this is I want this to not just be a one-way communication meeting. Please, if you have questions either during the presentation or after, we'll definitely have some time. I want to have a dialogue around that. If you were with us during this journey last year, you'll know we did a series of town halls after we awarded our contracts to our vendors. We want to do that differently this year and actually have conversations around how do we shape the contract document or the RFP that we're going to put out as we go down this journey. And then we'll have another series of town halls, probably in the spring after we've awarded those contracts. So, what you'll see is mostly the key provisions that came out of legislative directions through Senate Bill 1337, which was a labor of love for our Senate leadership, our House leadership, as well as the Healthcare Authority and pretty much every stakeholder that would be impacted by the provisions of the legislation and the managed care delivery system. So, I have to step over to this side to be able to read some of this because I'm not, I don't have the benefit of a screen across the room. But our goals first and foremost are to improve the health outcomes of Oklahomans. As Secretary Corbett was just mentioning, we all know that we rank in the bottom 10 for a lot of our health outcomes. I was reading a couple of days ago, third highest rate of heart disease. We are in the bottom 10 for obesity levels and across the nation of fifth worst in terms of infant mortality. The Healthcare Authority has a lot of great programs. We do a lot of care coordination with the resources we have available. But it's just clearly not enough and we need to try something different as we move forward in order to really impact the overall health of our, of our membership. So, the next is to move towards a value-based payment and away from payment based on volume. If you're a senior care provider now, you know that you provide a service, you submit a claim for that service and we reimburse for that service. We have some programs around supplemental payments. Most are based on volume or a number of bed days if you're an inpatient hospital. But we don't have a lot of programs around really paying for those outcomes or the value that we're getting for the services provided. So, one of the key goals for this, of course, is to move in that direction. Of course, also along with that is just contain costs and create more cost predictability for the state. This model involves a fully risk capitation methodology for payment, which simply means that we will have contracted entities that will help administer the programs along with us and for us. But that means we will pay them a per member per month. And within that per member per month, there's the expectation that these third-party entities are, are in control of making sure providers get paid. There's care coordination happening for our members and any service that member needs to improve their overall health. But that creates cost predictability for the state. So, what is it going to look like? So, you'll see some key terms. If anyone needs some late night reading, whenever we do drop the RFPs, I think the medical is around 600 pages and counting. So, I'm not expecting many folks to do that unless you're interested in bidding. But you'll see some key terms. The main difference from last year to this year is you won't see the term MCO or Managed Care Organization. There was a lot of thought and intentionality in how we designed the program along with our legislative partners and the Governor's Office. There was the recognition that in order to have a successful product, we need to leverage the voices of our Oklahoma providers. Folks that have, live in Oklahoma, they understand our population. So, we really wanted that, you know, voice at the table. And so, you're going to see the term PLE or Oklahoma Provider Led Entity. And so, we will be required to offer three statewide contracts for the medical RFP. One of those will be a provider-led entity. And essentially, what that is, is an organization that either has majority ownership or a majority governing, governing body that's comprised of Oklahoma providers. So, that's 51% ownership or governance. Again, it was really important to the state leaders to know that if there's an issue, they're used to calling us. They're used to calling Kevin and myself. They want to be able to call a local governing body, a local CEO that's in Oklahoma and knows Oklahoma values and, and hold them accountable. Also, I'm terrible at following slides perfectly, but I think I covered everything on that one. So, we realized that going into this, that there's a reason over the years, the Healthcare Authority has been able to procure and maintain a good provider network. A lot of that is around timely payment to providers. If you are experienced as a provider with Sooner Care, you know that if you submit a clean claim, you're going to get paid the next week. And we know that's important to keeping your practices going and moving and seeing our patients. We also know that timeliness of prior authorization turnaround is a big deal. All the things that you come to know and love of the Healthcare Authority in terms of administration are important to us to carry those forward in any third-party contract identity that we work with. So, not only in the RFP, but also legislatively directed, and Senate Bill 3037 are a lot of those protections around timely payment. Actually, the, I think the payment length in the Senate Bill is 14 days. So, it's a little longer than the week turnaround. But I have to say, as we were going through this journey last year and working with the partners that we had last year, none of them paid any less than weekly. Some, even if you submitted a claim that day by a certain cutoff time, you'd get paid the next day. So, I, I think it would be rare that we would even see a contractor that would go to that 14-day max. Another important element, of course, we can't improve our health outcomes without ensuring the quality of the services being provided. So, we can ensure the quality of service being provided by multiple ways. One of which is our oversight and monitoring of the program in general and our contract identities moving forward. We will do this through, well, I think I have a slide later where I'll talk in more detail around that. But there's a lot of ways that we can ensure that. So, the last bullet on here is, is really important from the, in terms of where are the dollars going? And how do we hold our partners accountable to make sure that they're going in the right place and investing in the right services? So, within the Senate Bill and will be baked into the contract is a requirement that our contracted entities spend 11% of their medical spend on primary care. Now, there will be a runway to get there. I want to say it's four years in order to get that. To give you a point of reference, currently, our, the Healthcare Authorities' spend through our contracted network is 4%. So, that's a long ways to go. And I think, but I were confident we can get there in four years. So, we will be working on what the definition of primary care looks like, you know, kind of what codes are included in that. I know there's a lot of probably varying opinions on, does it include certain services? Is it just physician primary care, for example? So, we'll work through a process of further defining that. But I know that, that's important as we move forward to understanding that impact. All right, population. So, who is and isn't going in? There are several slides on this that gives you a lot of detail into the technical terms of the population. But the, the short story is if you are an expansion population, you're a kid, you're a pregnant mom, those populations, that will be going into Sooner Select. The ones not, or if you are categorically eligible because you're age-blind disabled, if you're being served by a home and community-based waiver like Advantage, then you're not going to Sooner Select. We also have a program called Tefra where it's those high-needs, kids with high needs and they're in the program that would also not go to Sooner Select. We also will have a specific, a separate standalone plan that we're calling the Specialty Plan that will serve just those kids in the custody of the state, whether that be through child welfare, foster care, post-adoption services, prevention services, as well as juvenile affairs kids. Of note here is our American Indian Alaska Native population. They are welcome to opt into Sooner Select if they so choose, but we will not mandatorily enroll them. They can choose to opt in and opt out, but we, they will not be a mandatory transition. So, again, more detail about who's excluded. That's our, I missed the dual-eligibles. That's those individuals that have Medicare and Medicaid. Will not go into Sooner Select. If you're in the nursing home or ICF, if you have eligibility by way of presumptive eligibility. I will also say currently, we are under a public health emergency still because of coronavirus. And because of that, we currently have around 260,000 individuals on the Sooner Care Program that don't technically meet requirements, income requirements and others to be on the program. But because of the emergency and because of the enhanced dollars that we're receiving from the feds, the feds have said you can't unroll anyone. So, we are working with CMS on this. This will be another population that one day eventually, hopefully, the public health emergency will end. And those folks will not go to managed care. They will stay fee-for-service until that time that we can roll them off of the program. So, what's covered? So, just beginning statement there is if it's covered by Sooner Care today, it will be covered through Sooner Select by, by a contract identity. That's no question there. If it's covered today, it'll be covered moving forward. The great thing about moving to this model is, is that as a fee-for-service Medicaid state, there's a lot of things that we simply cannot do on our own. We're in the minority there. I think we're one of about 10 or 11 states that have not moved to some kind of a third-party managed care product to manage their service delivery. And because of that, there's things like we can't pay for, that we would consider a value add or something that a managed care entity could. So, for example, those things affecting social determinants of health. We have seen plans in the past give, you know, if, let's say there's a food desert where there's an area of town where there's not a lot of access to fresh foods. They can work with local partners and pantries in order to get those areas, the fresh foods and vegetables needed. That would be a value-added service. We've seen things like rewards programs where you log in and if you count your calories and you log your exercise hours, then you qualify for an Apple Watch, things like that to really incentivize changes at the member level that affects their overall, their overall health. We know, of course, it's important to go to the doctor, having your prevention services, but there's just a lot of things that are not treatment-focused that affect your everyday health. And that's what we are expecting our partners that, that are awarded the contracts to bring to the table. So, yeah, all physical health, behavioral health. I know we call this the medical RFP. It's just mostly to differentiate it from the dental RFP. But when we say medical, that's inclusive of your, the healthcare for your entire body outside of your teeth. So, that's physical health, behavioral health and pharmacy will all be included within the RFP for the medical entity. There will be a separate dental product, that RFP, unless just the servers go down overnight for 48 hours, will go out tomorrow. And there will be a level of expectation for that plan to also coordinate with the medical plan when needed. We understand that there's some dental procedures that can only be done in an emergency room. And there's follow-up after that. So, we're going to expect them all to talk together and ensure a level of coordination. Okay, I think I've covered all this just by talking. One thing I did mention specifically though was transportation. That's our, we currently have a Sooner Ride, our non-emergency transportation benefit that will be administered through a contracted entity that's, has a successful bid. With regard to pharmacy, there's a lot of stuff that comes along with that, mainly the preferred drug list and the pharmacy rebate. So, the Healthcare Authority participates in a rebate program where we actually, a money accrues to the Healthcare Authority from the drug manufacturers. That will still continue to happen. Those rebates will still accrue to the benefit of the Healthcare Authority. And we will still manage the preferred drug list. It's just that the payments and the benefit will be administered through a contracted entity. Network adequacy. So, this is a really important one, of course. But we have to, when we go through the process, so let's go down the road of we have put the RFP out, we have awarded contracts, contracts to successful vendors. There's going to be a very robust readiness review process. And all of these stages have to be approved and reviewed by our federal partner CMS. So, first of all, they will have to review and approve the contract that we issue. And then we are having actuarially set capitation rates done by a consultant. Those will have to be approved as well. Those rates are being figured now and they will actually be dropped about 30 days to the public after the RFPs dropped. So, about halfway through the procurement process. The next part on that is readiness review. That's where our team works through implementation processes with the contracted vendors that were successful. And one of the biggest things that we're going to look at during the readiness review is how their network looks, is their network adequate? This is a term of art that's required by CMS. It's, of course, required by us. We want to make sure that anyone serving our members has enough providers and specialties of all the different provider and specialty types to continue to serve our members. This, so we have very specific standards dealing with time and miles. So, like for primary care, for, for example, I think we're requiring like a 25-mile radius from that member's home to be able to obtain primary care. There's going to be a differentiation between urban and rural areas on mileage because we understand that difference. And you can meet it by way of telehealth and certain exceptions and things like that. But this is a really crucial point to, to understand and is that they have to have a net adequate network to go forward. Without that, we won't approve them to move forward and go live in the CMS one either. That's important because I know that there's a general anxiety or fear among a lot of the different providers around, are they going to cut my rates? Are they going to increase authorization requirements? Are they going to do these things to reduce overhead costs thereby increasing profit margins? What I would assure you is that our provider network is important to these future contracted entities for this purpose specifically. They can't move forward without you. So, now is the time to really work. If I had to guess, they're already reaching out to you and wanting letters of intent from providers. That is a okay to do. I would just say, read them carefully. They're all going to look a little different. But in a lot of ways, as a provider, you hold the cards in these discussions because it's important for them to have an adequate network. All right, quality and population health. As I mentioned earlier, we're laser-focused on the outcomes that we expect this delivery system to achieve. So, we're going to do that through multiple ways. We have an internal quality division, of course, that will do a level of oversight and monitoring. We have staff on site that will actually are charged with monitoring and compliance of our future contracted partners. We're working with consultants in this space that have deep experience and working with other states that can train our staff on how to kind of shift from an overall program management and administration of the Sooner Care Program to more of an oversight and compliance role. And really looking at how do we measure quality, both at the plan level and the individual provider level. Part of that also is that we will contract with an external quality review organization, which is actually a requirement of CMS that every state that has a managed care entity has an EQRO. We already selected that vendor last year. They've just kind of been waiting on pause to actually start some of their work. So, they'll be ready to go. There's also other things built in like our, the CAP survey, for example. It's a requirement of managed care entities and contracted entities to survey members. What's the member experience like with the plan and the provider? That's, it's an accredited tool. It's, it'll be administered by a single vendor for all of the plans. So, we can get good feedback on what's working and what's not from a member perspective. There will also be a requirement to have performance improvement plans for all the plans. There'll be three annually. The Healthcare Authority will have discretion to choose at least one and then the plans will have option to choose the other one or two, depending on how many we choose. But we want to allow for flexibility, autonomy and room for innovation in these performance improvement programs. So, I like to think about it, you know, think about Southeast Oklahoma. We know that various areas of the state are going to have different needs. Populations are different. The communities are different. There's different needs just based on the region of the state. So, we want to allow the flexibility for a plan to say, here's some things we've noticed and, or in Talawa, for example, in that area, things that we're seeing that's unique to this population. Maybe the ER utilization is super high for some reason. We're going to do a performance improvement project based on this one area and this one area of the state. And so, we want to allow flexibility for that. So, those will be conducted. We'll review those annually and we'll expect to see outcomes from that. So, real important here, and it was important during the legislative process when 1337 was being drafted, was not just having yours and other providers' voices now, but also throughout the process. So, we will be creating and are in the process of creating a quality advisory committee that will be, that will, will vet members and Secretary Corbett will approve them ultimately. And but we'll have a committee that continues to meet with the Healthcare Authority. We'll meet with the plans together and we'll help drive the quality metrics that we're expecting to see in terms of outcomes from the plans. If you didn't see it already, there's a table as you came in and there's, it gives you a link to where you can apply. These are physicians, members, members of all of our provider communities. If you have an interest in serving on this community, feel free to pick up a flyer. I will say too, if you're joining us virtually, if you go to the Sooner Select page, there will be a link there where you can also submit your information for consideration. We have also been actively working with the various provider associations and those, those directors to get names for candidates for this quality committee. Little bit more about the committee. It is open to, it is subject to the Open Meetings Act. So, all those rules would apply. And here's the real bummer, and you don't get paid to be on it, but it is a level of public service and giving back to your community. So, a big part of getting past some of the hurdles that we've had in the past with this is there's more money involved for our provider communities this time. What we learned in, from our, what I keep calling our good dress rehearsal last year, we've learned a lot then and in the time since then on new things we can do and achieve by going to the service delivery system, one of which was we can increase the amount of dollars in one of our supplemental programs. So, you may have heard the term shop, but it stands for Supplemental Hospital Offset Payment Program because we love an acronym. And it is a supplemental program that would goes to our hospital. So, our hospitals will put in some of their money. We will then take that money, use it as state share and match it with federal dollars and then bring those dollars back down and redistribute to our hospitals. This is a way of ensuring we have access to those critically needed hospital services in our urban and rural communities. But again, it's, it's volume-based. And so, what we learned is by going to a new service delivery system, we could actually increase the pool of supplemental dollars by around 500 to 600 million dollars. And so, through that, we can not only increase those supplemental dollars going to our hospital systems, but built into legislation and the companion to 1337, which is 1396, we can direct some of those dollars to other community providers like physicians, for example. And that's not just physicians working in a hospital, but it's those community primary care physicians and other providers. Now, we will have a separate process and I believe there's a meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks where we will dive into more detail with interested parties about how we're going to create that, what's it going to look like? How do we get the dollars to those community providers and what those quality metrics will be that we expect to see in order to get a share of those dollars? We do, we recognize that in year one, we're not going to see a lot of true quality outcomes in terms of moving the needle on health. And so, it's definitely going to be a runway over probably a five-year period to get to the point where we're looking at, okay, now we want to see a reduction in smoking or some level of reduction in obesity. But we know it takes steps to get there. So, there'd probably be a year where we want to do more pay-for-reporting, for example, getting provider practices more knowledgeable on how they make little incremental practice changes that we know will eventually affect those overall health outcomes. So, the upcoming meetings, and we have a Sooner Select page on the Healthcare Authority website. So, keep looking there. As these come up, we'll start adding more information to that site. Financial. All right. So, going back, I mentioned this earlier. This is, this will be a fully risk-based, capitated contract that will be approved by CMS. Again, what that means is that the state is not at risk for anything outside of that per member per month that we're paying to each of the plans for the members on their panel. In terms of the number of members going over into panels, currently, we have about 1.2 million Sooner Care members on the rolls. About 80% of that, so we're expecting about 800, 900,000 individuals will go to Sooner Select. And those will be divided among the more likely three plans. Of note here also is our, we will have a withhold agreement on our plans. And what this means is there's, we all know there's multiple ways of getting contractors to comply with our requirements. There's carrots and sticks. So, as we start going down this road, it's important to us that we have a little bit of a carrot hybrids stick approach in the beginning where we say we're going to withhold 1% of your total capitation payments right up front. When you demonstrate that you can meet the requirements that we have required of you, contracted entity, then you'll get those dollars back on the backend. So, that's, that's what we mean by withhold agreement. First point here is really important in terms of giving a level of comfort to our provider network is that we do have the expectation that our contracted entities at some point not to, in the far too distant future, will arrive at value-based payment agreements with our providers. We know that takes time. We know that's not a day-one activity. So, it is in legislation, it'll be in the contract and we'll ensure it stays this way, that until July 1st of 2026, we'll have a two-year period where contracted entity cannot reduce rates, provider rates below what they are paid by us the day before going into a managed care environment. So, that means if you bill fee-for-service now and you get a certain rate, you will continue to get that same level of reimbursement up until July 1st of 2026. There are some payment methodologies that are protected by federal law. Now, those are mentioned there. Our federally qualified health centers, rural health centers, Indian healthcare providers and other providers that have statutorily federal legislation for their rates, those will remain preserved in this environment as well. So, I have a timeline that gives you kind of a whole lot of nothing in terms of specificity. But as I mentioned earlier, the, the dental is going out tomorrow. We fully expect our medical RFP to drop on or around October the 3rd. I keep saying October 1st and everyone's like, Trailer, that's a Saturday. So, October 3rd is probably our expected release date for that. But we want to be able to maintain some flexibility. Things happen. There's a lot that goes in these contracts. It's more important for us to do it right. But there is a legislative required deadline for us to implement of October of 2023. We realize that's super ambitious, but that's how we roll at the Healthcare Authority. And a really important caveat to that is it's pending CMS approval. So, I mentioned a while ago, they have to review and approve contracts, rates, readiness review, network adequacy. We have great partners at the federal level, but there's a lot, it just takes time to do. They've assured us they will do everything to get us to our legislatively required deadline. But also, we need that flexibility in case we're just not ready yet. But we're doing everything we can and on this kind of aggressive timeline in terms of RFP release because we want to exercise good faith at the state level to get us there. And that's, that's in my formal presentation. Happy to take questions. Yes, in the back.
I had, when I registered, I had submitted questions. I don't know if you have those or
Somebody does, yes.
If you wanted to, to do that. But I guess number one is, you know, so October 3rd. we would be, you know, expecting our capitation checks along with our claim checks. And so how is that going to go, you know? How do we budget and what are we going to get paid?
Sure. So by that, I'm guessing you're you're a patient in a medical home, is that right? So when I say October, so we need to think of October and a month and October of next year. So right now, everything's going to stay status quo until we actually go live. Between awarding the contracts and go live, there's going to be a lot of provider recruitment, provider education happening, not only from the healthcare authority, but also our contracted entities that are awarded the bid. There is a requirement that they also use a medical home model. It may look a little different than ours, but I know there's a lot of desire to kind of keep the same arrangements moving forward. So we will have a long runway over the next eighteen months to do a lot more outreach and education around exactly that. Giving you a little more predictability about budgeting and what reimbursement is going to look like when we actually go live. And I'll read, I may not be able to specifically answer all your questions and concerns. But the valuable part of today is I want to hear them so we can make sure that these, the concerns are addressed in the contract. So that's something I've got my RFP teams listening and is online right now, and they're documenting that as well.
We serve a really indigent population. I have a lot of drug addicts and alcoholics. As far as looking at an ACO top arrangement on value base, these people don't work with those arrangements because of their issues. And I'm not sure is a medical home. It would mean if you're noncompliant and most of these, they're going to dismiss you. Where, where do these people go? If you're dismissed from primary cares for noncompliance?
Are you asking me where the provider goes or the members?
No, the, the, the patient, yeah, my patients that are on drugs.
Right. So the difference around the current model that we operate, the one we're moving to, is there's going to be an increased level of care coordination from the contracted entities and we're able to provide right now. So I would expect a level of outreach and care coordination, actually direct member involvement to be far beyond what we're currently able to provide at the healthcare authority to help find those members and appropriate, you know, provider that can meet those needs or help you meet their needs in certain ways that maybe they're not able to right now. Well, and value base is going to look different. It's not going to be a cookie cutter model. So it's going to look different based on what services you're providing, the expectations for improvement and outcomes. Again, we're not we're not going to create an unachievable standard in order to participate in a value based payment arrangement. So there will be things that can incrementally change at the practice level, again, that helps you get towards health outcome improvement. But there's not going to be an expectation that you heal someone of their addiction, if that's not a realistic achievable outcome, there'll be incremental steps to get there. And I would say that's when I say they're going to start reaching out to you for letters of intent and contracting arrangements and discussions, that's a discussion you should be having with the plans when they are awarded and start talking with you.
So a couple of questions, one is, will you be releasing any information? You mentioned that there's, we're one of only like eleven states who don't have this kind of working system. Will you be releasing any of those other facts from those other states to say, these are the outcome measures we looked at? They actually showed an improvement in these outcome measures as far as obesity, smoking, whatever it is we're looking at. And then when you break that down into specifically for like a pediatric, physical occupational and speech therapy population, where we know going in, when we know kids come two or three standard deviations behind, they also grow a year every year, you grow them a year, so they stay behind. Like what that per not per pupil, that's my education hat, but my per kiddo spending is that we've been seeing in Oklahoma versus what you're saying, you're going to give medical spend for contracted entities. And if that's capped, are we also looking at medical entities that are going to be not for profit? Are we looking at a for profit system like what we have seen not do so well in our privatization of prisons in Oklahoma? So those are some of the kind of the concepts that I'm asking about.
Sure. So to address your first one, we're not intending to drop dashboards on how we compare to other states, there are, there are reports that do that. I will say that we've spent the last twenty four months evaluating other states, whether their successes or failures and learn from them. That's the good thing about being forty first of doing this is we can, there's forty we can learn from. We want to be very Oklahoma specific and realistic in our expectations around those quality outcomes. And so I know we will, that's also the importance of that quality committee to help drive that and inform us and as we go that direction. But also something that we're relying on our contracted EQRO and our internal chief quality officer to to work on, but that's, that's a great point. The second one is I expect there to be a mix of for profit and not for profit as we go down this path. Again, going back to the provider led entity, that could look like a lot of different things. When folks are asking me now, like, what is a PL? I'm like, I'm kind of going to know it when I see it because we've had several kind of unofficial proposals, but until someone submits and tells us their actual organizational design, we're not really going to know. But I would expect that some of those may be not for profit. I know there's a concern about administrative overhead. And, you know, if we offer a contract to a commercial private for profit entity, there are protections that we can put in place for that, specifically how we calculate our medical loss ratios and other protective mechanisms. I will say that we proudly run a really lean program now, and we have a fairly low administrative overhead cost associated with that. That comes with its own set of issues. There's a lot of stuff we simply don't have the resources to do. Like I mentioned earlier, we do a great service to our members and offering a level of care coordination. But we have resources to do that for our chronically ill populations. We don't do health risk screenings on everyone coming into the program because we don't have the resources to care manage everyone. So by allowing a certain level of administrative overhead, that's what we need them to have in order to invest in in IT infrastructure, personnel to do care coordination, and to be able to afford to offer those value added benefits, like I mentioned earlier with the gym memberships and the rewards programs and all those other things that we're not paying them for. So it's a concern of ours too, and which I hope you find comfort in, it is a concern, and we are doing, taking steps to address that in the RFP.
Sorry, I had a lot of questions that I submitted to that, but and but to the provider led entity, you know, I've heard people say, oh, well, you should be happy nurse practitioners are considered a provider led. But when I read that bill, it's like the provider led entity is going to be like a massive corporation that could then, it's not an individual practice, correct?
I don't know that it's individual practice, but here's what it could be in what we've seen in at least one other state. It could be a hospital system, it could be a set of safety net providers that have come together. Now, they will still be expected to perform like a commercial plant, like a health maintenance organization would, so there'll be certain capital requirements, reserve requirements, they have to be licensed as an HMO. To get there, those practices that come together can partner with a typical commercial plan to do the back office stuff like claims processing, a level of care coordination, stuff that they can bring the resources of an IT platform that a provider practice may not have. So again, it could look like a lot of different things, it could be small practices coming together. We have current ACO models that are very similar that are, like I said, safety net providers coming together and forming a network.
And then, so another question I had, this is kind of on the performance summaries that are going out, you know, I guess this last two quarters here. And I'm looking at mine and, you know, it's always been higher. My, my money was always higher before this new model, for one. And then I noticed that on some things like I was a top performer, so I don't get any money because I didn't improve because there's nowhere to go above top. So, you know, how is that going to play into this value based thing if you're, you know, it's kind of like you need to be bad so you can improve, so you can get get more, but what if you're, what if you're meeting that, you know? And then, of course, there's the reality of which I think the lady was talking about that this is a fairly unreliable population in a lot of aspects, whether that's social net, economic challenges of transportation, money, phones, et cetera. You know, that that caused people not to be compliant.
Sure. So for reference, everyone in the room virtually, I want to clarify what you're specifically referring to as our patient, our current patients in our medical home redesign. So just in the last couple of months, so we have a patient center medical home, it's a partially capitated program where providers are reimbursed fee for service, but there's also an option to get additional per member per month payments in the range of like five dollars. In addition to that, we have sooner excel payments that pay for success, basically pay for outcomes. We, prior to going down our journey last year of going to managed care, we had started our patients in our medical home redesign process. We put that on hold when we started going with sooner select, sooner select paused, or like, let's pick up with redesign. So what you're referring to, as I believe is our patients in our medical home redesign, where we changed some of the metrics, some of the targets. And so you may have seen a change in payment related to that change. I will also say the first month that rolled out was not perfect, and so we're working on that because some providers were paid less than they were should and others more. And so we're working on reconciling that with finance. So hopefully some of that's going to be resolved, but I wanted to make sure that we're distinguishing that between what we're moving forward to. Because that specific program that it's administered by us will not exist in a future sooner select environment.
Right, I understand that, but the point of it was that this is, you know, kind of an outcome based incentive, and I'm saying, you know, it's less than what it was previously, but it's also it's kind of odd because it's like you're at a top performer and it's like you just stay there, you then you didn't get any incentive money because you didn't improve, but you were already a top performer. So you know, so basically, it's like we're moving to a system that's all based on pay similar to this, is that kind of what you're saying?
It's going to look different, it's not going to look exactly like that. And I just want to clarify, I wanted to make sure the room understood what you and I are talking about. It's going to look different, it's not going to look exactly like that, but I hear what you're saying, and I'm Sandra, Amanda and Stephanie on online, if they're making notes around this, making sure that we have requirements and there are that kind of address that, or at least speak to that point in the RFP.
I'm the owner of a small, growing occupational, physical and speech therapy clinic for children. And my concern is that if a PLE is owned by a hospital, then will they be referring their patients to outpatient, small, local clinics, or will they just build their own pediatric clinic in their hospital? And cut us out?
So that goes back to the network adequacy piece. So there's protections around just in that alone is that you cannot just self serve as a PLE. I know there was concerns around that, but I don't see a world where a PLE cannot refer outside of their own network. And there's actually requirements, we have a list of essential community providers that have to be extended contracts. I will say that your specialty in particular is one that's needed, and I, and I would, I would expect that they would offer contracts. Another safety thing there is there will be at least three statewide contractors. You don't have to contract with all of them, you could choose to. But you may form a really good relationship with a plan that their members are more, you know, meet the need, you know, your provider type can meet the needs of a special plans membership, for example. So there's various mechanisms there to protect that.
Will there be an RFP for pediatrics that will be specific to what?
Everything is going to be baked into the medical RFP. But every service that we are requiring for and providing for, there's very specific metrics and requirements of moving forward as well.
And I know you said you're in the process of building the RFP. Have you considered the needs of the children? You know, with developmental disabilities and how that RFP is going to address their needs for therapy?
I, if I recall correctly, so full transparency, we had a, we had a magnificent RFP last year. So there's going to be a lot of building off what we did last year. If I recall correctly, yes, there's certain levels of screenings required and assessments and provider type requirements, especially like an applied behavioral analysis, for example. And health screenings, again, as members come in and join a plan, there's a level of health screening for early identification and referral that doesn't currently exist in our environment.
And sorry, I have so many questions.
No, you're fine, that's all we're here.
I'm also have organized the Oklahoma Pediatric Therapy Advocacy Group for all of the clinic owners in the state. So we have a lot of concerned providers out there and many, many questions that maybe needed their own town hall. So that we're not taking up everyone's time with my questions, but value based model for us, I feel like is a huge question. It sounds like it's going to be very different for hospitals and centers, you know, but for outpatient clinics, what does that look like?
I, great question, I couldn't tell you right now. We, we expect a level of response from our contracted entities that are bidding to tell us their take on that. They will be scored on how they propose to get to a value based payment. Again, even after the first two years, it's not even realistic that every provider type be in a value based payment arrangement. It may be that fee for service is still appropriate for some specialties and provider types. I would also guess that there's a lot of good work happening in your practice that is improving outcomes of the kiddos you see that you may should be compensated for in addition to fee for service. And so typically, the, especially the providers that show up for these, we know you're passionate about what you do and you're interested, and that's usually our came with a crop provider network, so you more than likely stand to make more in terms of reimbursement. Because I'm guessing your outcomes are probably already showing it.
They are showing it, definitely. My concern is everything, I've talked to other therapists in other states who have this model and it's difficult sometimes to measure. And I haven't heard another therapist say that it's a great move for the children. Because we get limited on units, we get limited on visits, and it's hard to put a value to, you know, a parent subjectively, you know, telling you that you changed their kid's life. So, you know, I mean, a survey, maybe, I don't, I don't know how we're going to measure our outcomes.
Right. And that's, and that's where there will be a lot of help from a contacted entity, because you're right. It's hard to assign a value to an anecdotal story. But I guarantee you, there's touch points there that can get you to a health outcome that we're just not reporting. So that's when I mentioned that we will expect a runway to get to actual health outcomes. Some of that is pay for reporting, so it could be a there's now this quick little form, we need you to fill out at your authorization update that collects more information than we currently get, that's going to track progress from beginning of treatment till the end of that episode. And so there's going to be those incremental steps. But I also understand talking to colleagues in other states, because every state's going to do it differently too, and we're trying to learn from them. Afterwards, I'll leave a stack of my cards, so reach out to me directly, I can get a separate meeting with you and your colleagues in the, in that specialty area to talk through it.
Hi there. My question centers around awareness, okay? Will the contracted entities be required to conduct activities to bring about awareness of the program? For instance, you have a community where that's being underserved, that's underserved, maybe they're not aware of sooner care select, that may not be aware of Medicaid expansion and all. Will there be any requirement placed upon them to conduct outreach types of activities that bring about awareness?
There will be, there's a whole section on RFP about outreach activities. So I will say a couple of things there. The healthcare authority will remain in control of the eligibility process. So members will still come to the healthcare authority, will adjudicate their income information, their family household size, and we will give eligibility. And from there, during the eligibility online enrollment process, they'll have the option to select a plan. We will actually work with our current call center staff to retrain them from a member services type mindset to a choice counseling mindset. So that if member says, I don't know which of these three plans I want, our staff will help them choose based on the various value added benefits each plan. our staff will help them choose based on the various value-added benefits each plan's offers and what's best for their family. I say that because there are certain prohibitions and federal law around contracted entities cannot do their own marketing for members. They can't go recruit members to join my plan. That has to come to the healthcare authority for, for good reason. But after that, once they're a member of the plan, there is an expectation around outreach, marketing. We were just having a conversation today, all the marketing materials will have to be approved by our team, Melissa and her team, to make sure that they're appropriate. We would expect to see that in a marketing stack in the very beginning and approve it for ongoing use. But yes, we saw talent, we, we saw a lot of that last year before we had to press pause, a lot of community outreach, a lot of setting up. They have mobile vans around the state. On the dental, we see mobile dental vans that we don't have access to. It's also important to note that there will be a level of requirements around health, health equity activities. And there's actually health equity accreditation's out there for organizations like this that we may or may not require. So there's, there's, there'll be a lot in that space for that.
Trailer, we have a question online.
Okay.
Who is involved in the selection process of the contracted entities?
So we will have an established evaluation team. We have not formed that team yet, but it'll be a mix of healthcare authority employees, maybe some staff from some sister agencies. Especially with that, again, we'll have a dental plan, a medical plan, and a children's specialty plan to serve those state custody kids. We'll definitely have members from like juvenile justice and child welfare services to evaluate those plans. But we're also looking for appropriate members from the healthcare community that wouldn't otherwise have a conflict. We want a broad array of decisions and experience contributing to evaluating the plans. Is one over here?
We, last year when the RFP was happening and providers were getting all the contracts sent to them to join our network. One of the concerns when I looked at those were they weren't specific on rates. So we're agreeing to be a provider network that's based on words, but no numbers. And yours, if I hear you correctly, we wouldn't see numbers, we would have already agreed to be in these, these medical entities without knowing what they were going to be on their fee schedule or value added or any of the financial side of it. But we wouldn't even see the numbers come out till two weeks before it came into effect. And yes, it would be for two years, we'd stay at the same rate in theory, providers would, in theory, for two years, but that could be the same rate for a CPT code that no longer exists. And they could change that. But how, how do we make informed decisions to be part, because you're saying the provider's voice is whichever entity gets the most providers to sign up is the ones that you'd most likely choose because they would have the largest network. But providers are being asked to be credentialed with this network without knowing the rates that they're agreeing to serve under.
So I will say to that, there's going to be two different, two different processes there. So right now, my guess is they're offering letters of intent, because of course they don't have a contract with us, they can't legally give you a contract to be a network provider. Those letters of intent, I would say if they don't have a fee schedule for you, again, two years, you're going to be using our fee schedule anyway. But that's, you definitely did ask that. And I don't know that I would sign it if I didn't know what I'd be being paid. I would, just based on lessons learned from last year too, I would read them carefully because some potential bidders may have other lines of business in Oklahoma. Some of those, once you sign said upon signature and upon this go live of this process, you automatically are contracted network for other lines of business. If that's okay with you, fine. If not, that's something that's important to note when signing those letters of intent. Some of those letters of intent may also have an automatic clause that upon award of contract from us, you're automatically contracted in their network. Lots of things that I can't really give advice on, but I would want to help for, and just be sure it works for you.
Is there any way though, in the RFP process that you guys could require more transparency on the medical entities and more adherence to fair practices?
Yes. Yes. And that's where we, we struggle a little bit because there's a lot of stuff I would love to control in the pre-solicitation period. And I just have no control over a potential contract identity, but once they are contracted, we actually have a requirement, they have to send us their provider contracts. Amy Broad's team will look at that, make sure it meets our standards and will address all those things you're mentioning. There's just nothing I can do to control the letter of intent process, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I know in other states, some of the expansion plans are required to use the fee schedule of their state Medicaid. What would, what's keeping Oklahoma from doing something like that to make sure that these different insurance companies aren't planning to drop rates lower than what we would get from just standard state Medicaid?
So we did for two years. So there's a, for, for two years, there's that floor. We also have to remember, we have to allow space and the, the dollars that we're giving them, they have to use to not only continue to provide the level of service we provide and authorize, but also pay for social determinants and all those additional value-added benefits. And they need room in those rates to have savings somewhere to invest in outcomes and pay the top performing providers that are achieving those outcomes a little more. And I, I wouldn't look at it in terms of, just for example, when we have really bad budget years, we do across the board rate cuts. We probably all have been through it together, where we'll say, we're going to reduce all rates across the board by 3%. It may not even look like that. It could be a code that you are heavily under utilizing that they lower a rate on. Whereas other codes, they keep you at the same. But again, kind of going back to the conversation earlier, in most circumstances, there's going to be an opportunity for the good work that you're doing to be recognized through an enhanced reimbursement. But we are protecting the floor for two years.
We have another online question, trailer.
Okay.
Will auditing processes be the same under this new model?
Yes. So I'm assuming it's auditing of providers. So there will be a level of program integrity reviews conducted by the contracted entities. They will do the bulk of it. There will be grievance and appeals procedures that be, you know, based on those results at the plan level that will escalate all the way up to the healthcare authority through a state fair hearing. But a lot of those activities will transition to a contracted entity. But there's also some that are federally required to stay with the healthcare authority, but yes. If you might, yeah.
Okay. So based on like what you're saying, you know, we've said it for two years. It's, it's kind of like you're saying, we know it's going to drop in, in two years, but we're going to cover you for this two years, you know? So it was like, we can expect that, that that's going to happen. I mean, somebody's got to pay for that, the Apple watches and the iPhones and the Fitbits that everybody gets. I mean, that company's only going to get X dollars from the state of Oklahoma. And then they have to figure out how to do all those extra things and pay us too.
Well, and it'll be a difference in how the dollars are distributed. Again, I'm guessing, and it's usually a safe guess, and most of the providers in there from this forum, again, you're going to be some of our top performing providers and you're going to be paid for as such. There's, there's also some providers that are just providing the services for the folks that walk in without it, adding that extra level of service that actually improves health. It's not a safe assumption to say they're just going to go down. There's other ways to contain costs. I will say too, that there will be protections around prior authorization requirements. So they cannot be more strict than the criteria we use to authorize services. And so you should be assured in the fact that there won't just be like an enhancement on all PAs coming forward, for example, to reduce services. I think there, there will be some level of reduction in fee for service reimbursement, but there's an opportunity then to have more supplemental on top of that for performance, but there has to be a gap between fee for service and the upper payment level in order to have dollars for those supplementals.
Okay. Another question online. Can you just explain the differences for our audience between Medicaid expansion and sooner select?
Of course. So expansion, as we all know, last July, through a vote of the people, that we expanded Medicaid for individuals aged 19 to 64, who are not otherwise categorically eligible for sooner care. Now can be if they have a certain income level, it's 138% of the federal poverty limit for a family of four. It's about $37,000 for an individual, it's around $18,000 a year. So they have access to sooner care now. We have a little over 300,000 individuals that now have eligibility through sooner care because of expansion. That is a population. Sooner select will actually be a service delivery system on how we manage the program and distribute services and reimburse those services to our population, one of which is expansion.
I have a couple of questions actually. And do they, are they required to extend contracts to all current Medicaid providers?
Not all. There is a list of essential community providers. It's fairly extensive list. I don't know that off the top of my head. I know like federally qualified health centers, CMHCs, hospitals participating in supplemental programs. So they don't have to offer to all provider types. But again, network adequacy would more than likely require that.
Right. We've just seen a lot of networks become, you know, too saturated and they'll stop offering contracts for certain specialties. So that's where, especially with the commercial payers and especially with the HMO plans.
So one thing there is we have, what is it, Kevin, over 70,000 providers in our network? A lot of which don't even see our members. And so we have a large contracted network, but they're not actually a sooner care provider because they're not actually seeing our members and being reimbursed. Once we have contract awards and go through implementation, there will be a level of us giving that information about utilization of providers to those members, to the contracted entities. So they can actually target and work with those providers that they know are actually providing services to members. And so if you are a provider with an active, actively participating in our program, the chances are you will be offered a contract.
And then will the members be able to switch from one contracted entity to another? And if so, how often are they able to do that?
I may need to phone a friend on this one, but I know that during open enrollment period, you have a choice. So we have initial enrollment. So once we go live, there'll be a, I want to say a 90 day period prior to implementation where members can choose a plan. Then there's a period, I want to say 30 to 60 days after choice that they can choose another plan. But then after that, they're locked in until the next open enrollment. Unless there's just really extenuating circumstances that they would need to be moved out.
All right. Thank you. And then my next two questions kind of go together. How will the outcome measures be reported? Is it going to be through claims-based reporting? Or is it going to be similar to the MACRA and MIPS program through CMS? And will there be negative payment adjustments if the measures are not met?
Hmm. I don't know the answers to those questions, but it's something we can take back and make sure it's in the RFP. I do know that some of it will have to be claims-based, others may be, again, something that we see in the proposals. But we're, we're taking notes to make sure that that's addressed.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
Sure. And a lot of these questions, once we have awarded entities, we'll do another level of, Melissa's probably cringing, another level of stakeholder engagement and setting uptown halls around the state and taking our contracted partners with us so they can answer a lot of these questions. We had afforded opportunity last year was great for them to actually go to the tables, meet with them, ask those questions if they hadn't had them answered already. So there, you'll get a lot more information at that point. Once we know more.
Another question online. How are HANs and HMPs going to be included if at all?
Sure. So HAN is our health access networks. We have, I want to say three in the state and they work with some of our patients in our medical homes. It's basically an extra level of support for care coordination that wraps around a medical home. We have again, three of those. They will continue to serve members that for sure, that are in our chronic care population that we manage. So again, those age blind disables, the folks that are not transitioning those sooner selective represents about 20 to 25% of our members. I also would, it's not a requirement, but it's kind of an expectation that plans would reach out to current infrastructures that have that capability. There's a requirement in the legislation actually that requires contracted entities to contract with a, it's a LOPO, a local Oklahoma provider organization for a care delivery model. That can be a variety of different types, but I could see a world where a contracted entity contracts with the current health access network to provide that local Oklahoma provider organization level of service needed to fulfill those requirements of the statute and RFP. The HMP is our health management program that's a program administered by the healthcare authority in collaboration with a contractor that works on managing the health of our population that we serve. So again, there'll be a level that stays with us, that 20% that will continue to utilize that program for. Cause we realize, we have realized a lot of cost savings and avoidance by monitoring our population through that viable program. But the rest will be the responsibility of a contracted entity.
I wanted to ask about the physician-led entities. Because I am a small independent practice and I'm taking 90% Medicaid. That most of these will be a hospital affiliation. So would you be looking at us as little independent guys to be meeting, calling your people in your area and trying to set up some kind of a, a group so that you, you'll be able to participate?
No. So to make a distinction there, there's going to be a difference between a contracted entity, a local Oklahoma provider organization, LOPO, that is specifically a requirement to do a care delivery system. Like let's say, let's say there's a federally qualified health center that in addition to their basic everyday primary preventive services, offers some special program around care coordinating new first time mothers, for example. They may have a presence in their community. Everyone knows about that program. It's working. There's good outcomes there. We would consider that a LOPO contract. So they're still getting reimbursed as a provider, all the fee for service stuff, but they may have a infrastructure outside of that, that's valuable to a contact identity. That's also distinguished from a participating provider. So if you are a physician or a mental health clinic or individual provider, you're a participating provider. And you would contract as, as you would with us today as a provider services and be reimbursed fee for service.
Um, the second question that I have is what about the patient's responsibility on these plans? You're making like three distinct different plans. Do the patient have any larger stake in some of them? We run regardless of how I've tried to do this, it's a 25% no-show rate. So you have to deal with that if you're primary care. And you're not able to, you know, charge the patient for the missed appointments. All you can do is dismiss them for excessive notions. What about the contracted insurance plans? Are they going to be able to, are we going to be able to bill the patient from no-show appointments and
No. So
They have any larger stake at all?
So yes, there's always member of member responsibility. I will say there's still the federal protections of not being able to bill a sooner care client for missed appointment or for a service in general beyond their required copay. But what a contracted entity would do, and we would have the expectation of, is that they're looking at the root cause of those missed appointments a lot more closely than we could in terms of why did they miss that appointment? Was it a childcare issue? Was it because they tried to arrange for sooner ride and sooner ride didn't pick them up or they didn't call on time? You know, so they can get more creative with, did you need a gas card? Did you need transportation outside of sooner ride that maybe they could provide that we couldn't? They're really, yes, there's a level of member responsibility, but also a responsibility on our contracted entity to see why they're missing their appointments and what we can do to better support them to get there.
Most of them are forgot, forgot.
Okay. And I had a question about who is going to regulate the reimbursement rates after the two years? Is there a regulation or do they base it on? A lot of times Medicaid rates are based on Medicare rates and CMS.
So there, so there will be, there will be a very high level of monitoring and oversight that the healthcare authority will provide. So we're not giving the keys away to the castle on this one. It's actually, it's a joint relationship. Where we're the boss and we're driving the, the car on this one. There are CMS standards about reasonableness when it comes to rates. And so there will be various tests that proposed rates will have to go through to still meet those reasonable and necessary rate standards that CMS has set. And other mechanisms for us to ensure that. Cause we still, at the end of the day, have to ensure access for our members. And we all know that there's a tipping point in the rate process where access goes down. I will also say, especially in the worlds of mental health substance abuse and primary care, there's a very complicated and robust process for ensuring parity among how we pay for those various services and making sure that they're on par with the way we reimburse medical as well.
And will reimbursement rates be based on quality measures?
Some of it will. So I, I don't, again, I don't know. So we'll, we're outlining Some of it will. So I, I don't, again, I don't know. So we'll, we're outlining a lot of requirements in the RFP. But also we want to allow for some flexibility for comp plans to be innovative in that space. So there could be a level of fee for service reimbursement that's a little lower than you're used to currently. But again, more room for a supplemental payment that takes you above what your aggregate reimbursement would be today. So it's going to vary, I would guess, among the various entities. But we do have a lot of protections and different ways and levers we can pull within the contract.
Concern is that our administrative costs are going to go up. So you've given away administrative costs to them and then now they're going to also go up because now we have three plans we're dealing with.
So there's a couple, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there's a couple of things we're doing in that space too, because we, we know that's the case. Again, lessons learned from the dress rehearsal. We will be requiring a single credentialing entity so that you're not credentialing with, you know, say if we have three, you're not credentialing separately with three plants, with three different process, three different forms for all your providers. We're going to streamline and centralize that process. And so you'll still come through the healthcare authority, go through that screening enrollment process and credential once. And that credentialing decision will be accepted by all the plans and we're requiring that. The other main, big thing for us and moving forward this time is requiring a single provider facing portal to be used by the various plans to make sure that you have one place to go into that can be differentiated on the back down, backend through dropdowns and other mechanisms. So you're not going into three different provider portals. You're going into one that will service all of the payers on the backend. So we're trying. There's a lot of stuff that we're trying to do to not raise your administrative costs. Because that was something we, we definitely heard last year and wanted to make sure we took care of this year.
That is good to hear. Is there, but the portal's going to be totally revamped. This is a new system next year, next October.
Right. So you, unless you saw, and we'll have discussions with our business enterprise folks about how we can incorporate our portal. So if you still see an ABD member, for example, I think you'd still go to the healthcare authorities portal. But there'll be ways for file transfers on our parts with our entities to get eligibility information into that single portal and everything that you're used to seeing through ours would be available in that single portal.
And what about authorizations during that transition period?
So during the initial period, I want to say that we have a ninety day period where our new partners receiving members from us into their plan will have to honor our current level and existing PA for ninety days. And then that would give them time to allow for you to upload the most recent assessment or have a new assessment done, and then they would authorize. But again, criteria for their authorizations cannot be more restrictive than the criteria we currently use. But there will be, I want to say a ninety day period where it's honored.
And then are we guaranteed customer service in the United States when we call to ask about claims?
Yes, that is also very important to us is having an Oklahoma presence. And that goes back to, not only do we want provider voice and how these are owned and operated. But it's also important to us that these be in-state providers. So even if a contracted provider has a national presence, we will have very strict requirements for which positions we expect to be in Oklahoma, not even just the US. That includes call center. And we actually, as a government entity, have very strict prohibitions against offshoring, even in our contractors.
Okay, we have an online question. What platforms or processes will be put into place for providers to escalate issues with OHCA related to poor, for poor, poor performance of the contracted entities?
Good question. I can't detail them for you exactly because I don't remember exactly, but I know within the contract, there is going to be a certain level of resolving claims at the lowest possible level. So that's going to start with the plan. But those, there is a mechanism for that to elevate through the healthcare authority for us to respond to up to and including state fair hearing, for example. In addition to that, there will be, I want to say on last check, hundred fifty reports that we're going to require from a contracted entity on a monthly basis. Hence the need to train our internal staff about how to monitoring and ensure compliance. One of those reports, if I recall correctly, is around tracking member grievances and provider grievances. So we will still have sight on the level of grievances from across all the plans. Once we have sufficient information, there's also a requirement that we will have dashboards readily available on our public website that you can, that we will have already done the work, but you can easily compare plan to plan based on various outcome measures and metrics, including grievances and provider relations. So that's something that will all be consumable by the public on our site.
Well, back to kind of what she was saying there on the administrative thing. I see that like with the new value base thing, the only way that gets recorded is if the provider records an extra claim or number or something like that. So in a sense, in order for me to get these or to do these value based things, I'm having to then remember to mark down this extra and this extra and this extra. So all of that gets counted. Is that the way you see this kind of happening?
Like, it could be. I think that could be one. Again, we're not going to know exactly the process proposed till we see proposals. But that goes back to exactly the point around, we're not going to expect to see outcomes year one, but we will do pay for reporting. So we understand that there's a level of change in your practice necessary to move forward in this evolution. So we would expect to see something like, in those first years, we understand it's, it's a lot on your practice to report these measures because you're not used to doing that. So how can we compensate you for that? And then year two, it may look a little different. And then year five, you will have done that long enough to now we have good claims based data and information from your assessments and your reporting to know, now you're impacting outcomes and we'll reimburse you for that. So that, that would be my expectation and things like, I expect to see on some of the proposals.
Thank you.
I'm hoping I didn't miss this information previously. When, with these contracted entities, how long, like when they, when you first contract with them, how long is that contract going to be?
The initial term will be just shy of seven years. Yes. But that could change based on performance. So we're, that doesn't, that does not mean we're stuck with a bad performing contract identity. Because we have many remedies available to us up to and including termination if they're not meeting our needs. So if at any point we have someone in the market that exits due to their choice as a contracted entity, it's not working for them or it's not working for us. We would then rebid for, for another statewide contractor. I will say, I think I failed to mention this because I just mentioned the word statewide. We will have at least three statewide. The only time we would allow an urban option is if there is a provider led entity that says they want to be in the market, they can do a great thing, but they can only manage it in an urban region. And we define urban as Oklahoma City or Tulsa and those contiguous counties there too. We would allow that, but we would expect to see a timeframe within five years to achieve state wideness from that PLE. So we would expect gradual growth outside of that urban area over the five years. All right. Y'all have been a pretty easy crowd. So I'm getting the wrap it up hand signal from the back. So I want to say that thank you for coming and participating and asking questions. Again, I will leave a stack of my cards on the table outside. So you can shoot me an email and we'll get a response. Super valuable in how we move forward and craft our contracts moving forward. So we're glad you showed up today and we appreciate you.